Go mode, 12 cups of coffee. Ready now? Very good. Welcome everyone to Town of Lake Clark Shores. This is the final public hearing for 2024-2025 town budget. Roll call please.
Mayor Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Vice Mayor John Maples.
Here.
President Pro Tem Bridget Keating, Councilmember Taylor Matirio.
Here.
Councilmember Kristi Mossbach.
Okay. Good evening. We're could have a moment of silence. Tonight we're remembering Fred Pinto. He was 73 years old and he passed on 9/14/2024. And he was the longtime mayor of the city of Royal Palm Beach. Pastor Stan.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's look to the Lord. Suppose one of you wants to build a tower. Won't you first sit down and estimate the cost to see if you have enough money to complete it? If you lay the foundation and are not able to finish it, everyone who sees it will ridicule you, saying, "This person began to build and wasn't able to finish." Heavenly Father, we come before you asking for your provision, asking for your guidance and your wisdom. And Father, we would pray that you might minister into our very hearts. Our desire is to serve you and serve you well as a community. Go before us, providing us with your knowledge. We come before you in thy precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Bledge allegiance, in my honor. Bledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Stan.
Thank you Pastor.
Okay, this is the final public hearing for the town budget. So we'll turn the presentation over to Joe.
Thank you. Can I turn on the PowerPoint, please? Okay. Just want to let you know that we're, the council and staff are pleased to say that this is the last meeting for our budget. We started back in May and it's been a five, four month period of going over the budget. And we're just going to give you a little bit of a summary. But in July of this year, we passed a proposed millage rate of 6.1 mils, which was the same millage rate. And due, with due diligence of the council and staff, we were able to actually, these are, and you can go over these, these are past PowerPoint presentations that we had, but we're not going to go over them again. But we were, last meeting, we were very delighted to present a lower millage rate. So that's that graph right there. That chart shows that for over 10 years, the millage rate was at 6.2798. And last year, we reduced it to 6.1. And now the tentative millage rate was adopted last meeting at 5.9950. So that's two consecutive years of reducing the millage rate. So what does that mean to homesteaded properties? We're approximately reducing your millage rate by about 2%. And by state law, your assessed value cannot go higher than 3%. So no one who's homesteaded should have a tax bill from the town of Lake Clark Shores that is more than a one, around a 1% tax increase. So we're very happy with these, this high inflationary times to present a budget and a millage rate that for our residents, that's basically a 1% tax increase. So we're not going to go over all these highlights again because we did that, we did that last meeting two weeks ago. We want to save everybody's time. But again, most important thing, we want to thank the residents for your many calls and concerns and questions and the council for going over all of these questions in the budget. Spent numerous hours with the council members. They had great questions and great input. And we're here to recommend this, the same millage rate we had in our tentative meeting, which is a reduction. I have to read an announcement. And then the first resolution is on adopting the millage rate. The second one is on the budget. And the third one I'd like to go over is the five-year capital improvement element. So the announcement is the Town of Lake Clark Shores, setting and fixing the final millage rate to be levied at 5.9950 mils, which is 7.76% over the rollback rate of 5.5634.
Good. Thank you, sir. We'll move on to audience comments. I have two up here now. Did you want to put one up here also, Pete? All right. Jen Chinowski, you're, this, this says S2S. I don't understand what, huh? Are you? Oh, then you'll, you'll want to go during a regular meeting. Okay. All right. Tim, Tim Daughtry, there you are. I can read the first one, budget. What is the second one?
And I'm just, I'm at general meeting.
Okay.
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 Okay. Uh, so, you're going to vote on the new budget tonight. I'm looking at 9.8 million. Okay. For a town of 1,500 houses. 3,500.
Tim, talk into the microphone so they can all hear you. Thank you.
And we're spending too much money. Okay. It should be given back to the residents. And we're voting for a tax increase. Okay, that's what we're doing. We're voting for a tax increase. Okay. Okay. There's no other way to put it. This is a tax increase. Okay. If it's not rolled back all the way, it's a tax increase. Black and white, even Joe just mentioned it right now. It's a tax increase. Okay. There's no reason for us to be voting in a tax increase. Okay. With the increased assessments of residential property in our neighborhood, there's no reason for us to go and increase taxes on anybody. And we're talking about people with homesteaded property. Okay? Not every home in this town is homesteaded property. We're spending way too much money, way too much money. And we can't even fix the roads. Okay. I sit here month after month and I put my focus on where we're spending money. And one of the biggest ticket items we've discussed in the last month or two is the bridge. Okay, 2.45 million with one viable bid on it. Okay. And then we spent another 190,000 for an engineer to oversee the project and do inspections on this. Okay. So we're talking 2.65 million. I go back to the budget, 9.8 million. We can't even fix the roads. We can't even fix the roads. Okay. We need to fix the roads. There's, it has to be done. Okay. The roads are deteriorating on a rapid basis and there's some significant problems specifically with intersections. We talked about beta being addressed. Okay. But we haven't talked about Elvicourt North, which is as bad and maybe even worse so. I've mentioned time and again about the hole in the street on the house just south of Mike Fritz's house on the same side of the street. It's a hole in the ground. Okay. I hit it all the time going north. Okay. And it can't even get fixed. Okay. We have to fix problems with our roads. We have to fix problems with our intersections. We can't wait any longer. It's, it has to be in the budget and it has to be addressed on a budget by budget basis. It has to be. Okay. It has to be. There has to be a line item for road improvements. That has to be done. And this, this, I mentioned the roads and I mentioned the bridge. Okay. This is just one of many projects that we are going to have to undertake as part of infrastructure improvements. I mentioned it before and I'll mention it again. We need to list all these projects, come up with a reasonable budget for each one of these items and figure out how we're going to pay for all this stuff and where we're going to get this money from. Okay. It's not coming out of my pocket. I, I, I don't have the money to be able to spend on all these things. Okay. We got to cut back. Okay. We need to cut back on cars. Okay. It's crazy what we spend on vehicles in this town. Okay. And we need to consider doing a reduction in personnel. Okay. We're paying a lot of money, especially at the top end in this town for a town of 1,500 houses. Okay. 1,500 houses. Do we need to be spending these types of dollars for the people that are working for us and that our tax dollars are being spent on? We need to look at that. We really need to have a laser focus on that. Okay. Thank you.
What, what, what did number two say? I'm just.
Number two, I just want to speak in the.
Is that resurface? This is resurface?
No, I'm not, no. Regular meeting, regular meeting.
Oh, oh, okay. Okay, got you. All right. Very good.
Thank you, Tim.
So Pete, you want to talk at the regular meeting as well, right? Okay. Are there any other audience comments right now regarding the budget? Yes, ma'am. Come right up.
Carol Hassel, 7205 Westlake Drive. I just, one question I have is for these big projects that are going on, the bridge, the sewers. Is it just you guys that get to make those decisions? Because if I'd have known about the bridge, I would have said, no way.
The bridge was deemed obsolete by the Department of Transportation. Obsolete, correct?
No.
So you have a timeframe?
Last time you said there wasn't really anything structural or anything wrong with it.
They have a timeframe in there, Joe, correct? You want to explain?
Well, I'm not an engineer, but it's, it's functionally obsolete. And, and there's two, there's two categories. One is on structure and one is on functionally obsolete. And functionally obsolete was put on notice that it did not meet today's standards. So it's for liability purposes. It. Yeah.
Jen, please, you'll have your opportunity to talk. She's got the floor right now. Let's talk with her.
That is a concern for liability, for lawsuits and that, of that nature. And then the other one is on structural and it was close to being, again, I'm not a structural engineer, but it was close to being needing repair. And the, and the engineer who was here said it could be three years, could be five years. You know, there's no way to tell when it actually would surpass that.
But that, my question is that you guys just make the decision then? It's not?
That's, that's a legal question, but.
The answer is the town council makes the decision. They are your elected representatives and they conduct the daily business of the town and give direction to the administrative staff.
There was.
Plus, we had received from the state $680,000 or somewhere in that timeframe of monies that we had to use or we have to give it back. We were awarded another 250, but they vetoed that. So we had to use the money and the cost from just the time that we got the original dollars had already more than doubled in terms of dollars for that. And how many people did you say replied to the bid?
Well, the first time was two and the next time was two also. The first time we went out to bid with not closing both lanes and it was a million dollars higher.
Yeah, and we did try to keep one of the lanes open and it just added and added and added to the expense.
But that bridge, it looks just like the other two in our neighborhood. There, there's no sidewalks in our neighborhood anywhere. So to put all that money into a bridge to do sidewalks and make it wider for boats to go under just doesn't really hit good for me. And we have the boat parade every year and all those boats were able to get under there with all their stuff on there with no problem. So. And my neighbor took my husband across the street on his rather large boat and they went out underneath it and had no problem. So I just, is there, there's any way to contact you guys besides phone? Because when you go to your website, there's only phone numbers there. There's, I don't see any email addresses that I could email because I have a lot of issues, you know, with easements and other things that are happening. But I would, I would also like to see the boat ramp moved off of Westlake. Because you open it up to anybody and now it's, it's a free for all over there.
Yeah.
North Pine Tree Park would be perfect.
I have my card that I'm happy to give you too.
Okay.
Before you leave, which is my email on my cell phone. And I think all of us are happy to have a conversation. Very open door policy, but also that has been discussed at length. Like we have put a lot of conversation in the sunshine around that topic with a lot of public input at the meetings. But I'm happy to discuss it with you aside as well.
Are there any other audience comments at this time? No? Nobody? Okay. Do we have any email questions?
Yes.
Yes, but they're not about the budget.
They're not about the budget. Okay. And there was no written question. So we need a motion for approval of agenda?
I so moved.
Okay, second?
A second.
All in favor? Carrie's, motion for consent? Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Yeah, Charlie has to read the resolution.
Charlie, you have the floor now. You get the approval of the resolution.
Florida law requires me to read the resolution in full. Normally we don't read the resolutions, but this is required to be read in full. Resolution number 2024-22, a resolution of the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, adopting a final millage rate of 5.9950 mils for the fiscal year 2024/2025, providing for an effective date. Whereas the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores held a budget workshop on July 9th, 2024 for the purpose of discussing the proposed budget and proposed millage rate for fiscal year 2024/2025. And whereas during the July 9, 2024 town council meeting, the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores approved the proposed millage rate of 6.1000, noted the rollback millage rate for fiscal year 2024/2025 of 5.5634 and set the date for the final budget hearing to be on September 24th, 2024. And whereas the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores held its first public hearing as required by Florida statutes 200.065 on September 9, 2024, and public notice of the town council's intention to adopt a millage rate of 5.9950 was published in the Palm Beach Post on September 20th, 2024. Now therefore be it resolved by the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida as follows. That the, section one, that the tax rate hereby levied for fiscal year 2024/2025, and we need to fix that typo, shall be the millage rate of 5.9950 mils upon the non-exempt valuation of real and tangible personal property lying, being and situated in, within the boundaries of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida. Section two, the 2024/2025 millage rate of 5.9950 mils is 7.76% greater than the rollback rate of 5.5634 mils. Section three, this resolution will take effect upon adoption and if voted favorably by the council, passed and adopted this 24th day of September 2024.
Thank you, Charlie. Any council comments? Kristi, do you want to add anything in here?
No, I just repeat what I said at the last meeting that I applaud the staff for, for being able to roll back the millage rate for the last two years.
Taylor?
No comment.
Good. John?
No, no comment.
Okay. The budget is a guideline. It's a moving target. There's a lot of things within the town here that are going to require us to take action. The bridge was one of them. There are problems at the bridge. There are some safety issues. There have been. There's been a problem there. That's been being talked about for probably a year and a half. And we, maybe more than that, because we got those dollars, the 600,000 we got two years ago. So we're just trying to stay in front of these things so that at the end of the day, a lot of these capital improvements that are needed here in the town aren't going to overwhelm us because we are and Joe has tried to keep costs under control. So. Let's see. I'm going to need a motion to accept the final millage rate of 5.9950, which is a 7.76% over the rollback rate of 5.5634. Have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's. Okay, Charlie?
I need to read the. I need to read the budget resolution by title only. Resolution number 2024-23, a resolution of the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2024-2025 and providing for an effective date.
Okay, and so we now will need another motion to accept the 2024-2025 final budget.
So moved.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's. Okay.
All right.
That's it for the budget hearing. Now we'll move on to the.
Here.
Sorry.
Five year.
I got the.
Joe, you got the floor again.
Yeah, I have. The last item on the budget workshop, not workshop, hearing is this capital improvement element. It's a, it's a requirement by state statutes and it basically has two purposes. One is for us to plan on future infrastructure and capital needs for the next five years. So that's why the state requires the staff and the residents and the town council to sit down and talk about this every year. I had a great conversation with everybody on the council on this and actually have a recommendation to make two changes to what was presented. But the other reason is, let me give you an example, is, is for grant opportunities because you actually get more grant points on some grant opportunities if your project is in this capital improvement element. So let me explain why. There's, in 2030, I have $3 million for another bridge replacement. Do I think we need another bridge replacement in five or six years? No. But why you put that in there is because if something does come up three, four years from now, it's in there. It shows that we've been talking about it. We have other bridges and we might get more points on a grant application. So this is a plan. It's not a budget. It's just a plan. It has septic to sewer in there. It's not been voted on, but it's in there. It also has paving and other projects. So it's very detailed. Anyone can look at it on our website. It's, but the two suggestions, again, I had great conversations with the council, but Vice Mayor Maple suggested two that I totally agree with. One is to put in, we have a grant out there right now at the state level for dredging our lakes at $10 million. And also we're looking into also filing for that same grant on the federal level. And the feds do it a little different. They, they actually give you a little money every year, like 3 million, 4 million and 3 million that add up to the 10 million. So, so I agreed with John on that and I put in dredging the waterways for 10 million. And again, if we talk about it, we should put it in here. So even though paving is usually not something that we get with grants, we did talk about last meeting, paving Pine Tree Lane. This is not church. So, so if we talk about it, we should put it in there. So that goes with, so I agree with John. So instead of putting that 100,000 for this, this year, we just still have the 100,000 for the budget coming up next week. But for next year, we put in $300,000. Again, we know that you're not, you didn't vote on this. You didn't approve it, but we were putting in there. So anytime we talk about it, we should put it in there for those two purposes. So we discuss it and for grant opportunities. So I'd like you to consider the amended one that I put on your desk, which has those two changes. And.
Give me a motion.
Well, yeah.
First, Joe, thank you for taking the time. And, and residents, thank you for taking the time to come to this meeting and share with us what's important to you, which gives us insight to this five-year capital improvement plan, what needs to be in there. And part of the discussion that Joe and I had was based on the discussion that I've had with a lot of you. And a lot of you coming to these meetings and discussing some of the things that were important to you, which is why Joe and I had the conversation and he felt like, yeah, that, that definitely makes sense. And so I'm asking this council, I will make the motion to approve the capital year, capital improvement plan as presented for the five year with the amended dredging the waterways and the additional funds for paving the roads.
I would happily second that.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you.
Sir, second? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's. Now we can adjourn.
Yes. The budget. The blue agenda.
Okay, yes. I'm getting, I'm getting caught up. This is yours.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is the updated?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, that's it.
Yeah. There is a blue one back in here, but this is the one right here. Yeah, that's September 9th.
Yes.
Okay. We'll open the Town of Lake Clark Shores Town Council Meeting, September 24, 2024. Mary, roll call please.
I'm sorry. Mayor Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Vice Mayor John Maples.
Here.
President Pro Tem Bridget Keating. Councilmember Taylor Matirio.
Here.
Councilmember Kristi Mossbach.
Here.
Okay, thank you, Mary. All right, now we'll open it up to audience comments. Jen, you have the floor now.
Hi, council members. My name's Jen Chinowski. I live at 7130 Pine Tree Lane. I, I'm here today. I would like to ask the council for a resident vote on septic to sewer. So I'm not sure, because we have several new council members. I'm not sure who, who knows what, so I'll just repeat it. In November, a petition was signed by more than 950 Lake Clark Shores residents. It was turned into the town demanding our right to a resident vote on septic to sewer. Since we've now been blessed with three new council members on the board, I'm asking this board to recognize the petition that was turned in and give residents the same consideration as previous councils did, especially in 2005. Please give the 702 homes that will be required to fund the septic to sewer conversion project a vote. And I've brought with me a copy of the vote, which is a very simple, it's a one-page paper that was mailed out, I think. And I think there was a canvassing board implemented. This was in 2005. But I just wanted to give this to everyone here for their arousal and then hopefully you guys will let us have a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Our own little, our own little Norma Rae.
Okay, Pete?
I'm Pete Oldley, 6903 Pine Tree Lane. I've been pressure washing a lot of seawalls and taking the fecal matter from the two spills that we've had off of some of my clients' seawalls. I'm doing my own, but I want to know who do I charge for this work I've been doing, taking the fecal matter off of my seawall? Do you have any idea about that? We, we've had two terrible spills in the, in the last year. And it's, it's, it's really concerning. Maybe it's every, every pipe, every joint on every pipe could, is a potential leak hazard. And as they say, you know, it, it all goes downhill and it seems to end up on our seawall.
Charlie, that's a legal question. Can you help with that one?
I do not know the answer to that question.
I can't.
Joe, they're, they're work, they're working on something. It hasn't gone away.
Lakewood Beach and you can send me a bill and Lakewood Beach is collecting all the damages. Oh, there's a lawsuit and we, we don't have an update on the lawsuit, but.
Yeah, it's not going away.
It, it's an AT&amp;T subcontractor that allegedly did the damage. So.
Oh, yeah, yes. On, what was that, on Florida Mango?
Yeah.
I think Lakewood Beach initially, what'd they do? They put up $10 million or something?
They took out a loan for up to $10 million damages. So.
So.
What type of insurance do we have in, if we do get the sewers? What type of insurance do we have to cover when our pipes explode underneath the ground and the sinkholes are developed and everything else is just a, it's just going to be terrible? I went through that in 75 in Babylon, Long Island. I was in seventh grade and when they were done, I was in 12th grade. Okay, I have another couple of things here. I'm, I'm, I like to see Lake Clark Shores sign on I-95 saying two tenths of a mile. You know, so, because Palm Springs is advertising their, on signs in I-95. We have nothing that says Lake Clark Shores. People just drive by and then they end up, a couple of miles down, I get a phone call. You know, where are you? You know, where are you? All right. Yeah, you know, I, I was wondering, for the 1.3 million that we've been paying those surveyors for shovel-ready roads, how many shovel-ready roads do we really have?
We have five zones.
You have five zones. I didn't ask that questions. I didn't, I asked, how many shovel-ready roads are there for the 1.3 million that we've given those surveyors?
Right now, I think it's only one area.
Okay, that's enough. I, that, you made your, I made my point. Okay. You know, our life is going to change immensely if we, you know, do this sewer thing. It's, it's, it's horrible. And I, I went through it and I tell you, your taxes will double. Your water bill will triple because of the fact that not only are they going to charge you for the water you take in, but for the sewer on the way out. So just be aware of that, people.
You have annexation on here?
You know, every, every time there's going to be a hookup at a house, they're going to dig up the road again and they're going to hook the house up. And it's going to be like that for so many times, so many houses. I heard someone say we have 1,500 houses, some of which are already hooked up, some of which we're not going to do, but it just seems like there's a, there's a lot of things that can go so terribly wrong. Okay, another thing is I live right next to the bridge. And that's going to be crazy. 300 days, did you say?
Yeah, it's.
About that.
It's, it's.
If all goes, if all goes well. I don't see it happening. I see another. It's just, it's just a shame, I guess. And, and you know, the, the taxes are going up. My house is, went up from like 600,000 to like 1.1 million dollars. I just can't see it. You go to the grocery store, you try to buy groceries, if you don't bring $200, you ain't getting but a couple of bagfuls. All right, thanks.
Did, Pete, you had annexation on here. Did you want to ask a question about annexation?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
You know, that, that can help our tax base if we can annex the properties down Florida Mango, heading north on the east side. Those houses haven't been annexed by Palm Springs yet, but they're about to. And that, you know, is there any way we can increase our tax base? That's where I'm getting at.
Well, we just spent six years getting the definition of an enclave changed and we had this little pocket over here off of Palm and Edgewater and that area and through there, that they filled these chambers up and didn't want it. And it wasn't even really. It got voted down actually by the county. So we have been exploring that and that is going to come back to life when this session gets into session, because I agree with you, because we spend a lot of dollars providing services in those areas as well, that we feel like our residents should be compensated for.
Exactly.
So we, we are working on all of that. And I agree with you, we could go all the way down to Summit. We have all that area through there because it's a contiguous area and we did get that definition changed, but believe it or not, it took six years to get that done. Is that crazy?
It is crazy.
I know, but we're working on that.
Okay. Talking about another crazy thing.
No, no, heavens, no.
Here we go. What's going on with the spillway?
Spillway is not dead. There is a not-for-profit group that is still working on it. It's going to be privately funded when and if it does happen, the question's going to be, who wants to maintain it? There's a lot of variables in there, but it is not dead. There are some dollars in, in the account there that they have, so it's not a dead issue yet. We still work on it. Not from the count, the town has no dog in the fight. We don't have a dollar invested in it. It's all being done privately, through private entity.
You know, I've been here since 1970. Well, my heritage goes back to 72 in this town. And we were talking about the same things they were talking back then. You know, Galletta was in office and.
That just goes to show you, we're not quitters. That's right. We're still working on it and we will continue to work on it.
Yeah, that's been, you know, that's.
It'll be, it'll be.
Our blessing, by the way. I want to thank all the hard work you all do.
Thanks.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
And by the way, Pete, I agree with you about the spillway and, and I've, I've often wondered why we don't have a sign on I-95, but that's not up to us, that's up to like the Florida Highway people.
Good. Tim?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
We're a great kept secret.
Tim Daughtry, 1410 Keller Road. Septic sewer vote could have been done a long time ago. Why are we not voting on it? It's, and it's not requiring you to follow what we vote for, but it would be nice to get the residents' feelings about this project.
Tim, thank you.
Yeah, it would be nice to get the residents' input on this, okay? And we did this charrette. Was it two months ago? What about a public meeting to discuss this and discuss the nuts and bolts of it? The actual dollars, okay? We need to get down to the black brass tax, the dollars and how long it's going to take and what sort of disruption it's going to be to this town, okay? I've lived on septic tanks, I've lived on sewers, I've cracked more than enough septic tanks to know I'd much rather be on sewers, okay? And I've said this again and again and again. I support sewers. I do not support our septic to sewage plant. I do not, okay? Because we cannot afford it on an individual by individual basis. Okay, the bridge. We originally talked about a six, six-month closure. Then it went to eight months and now it's nine months. Okay? There's a shifting. Every month or so about the length of this closure, okay? They're all going to come right past my front door, okay? They're all going to come right past my front door. We need to be on top of this and we need to be on top of this timeline. It shifted twice in the last two months, okay? That's unacceptable, as far as I'm concerned. That's totally unacceptable. We originally talked about six months and now it's nine months. That's a 50% increase in time, okay? In two months' time. What are we going to do a month from now, two months from now, three months from now, when they're talking about 12 months or 13 months or 14 months or 15 months or 16 months? Doesn't work. It doesn't work. It absolutely doesn't work under any circumstances. It's coming by my front door, okay? And I'm not going to put up with it. I'm going to scream to the top, top rafters if this starts drifting, okay? I'm going to go by there in the morning and see how many people are working and I'm going to count the people working on that bridge and I'm going to report it to Joe, okay? Because I see how this stuff works. I work in construction, okay? It's easy to fill out a form and say, I've got 10 people working on the job when you got three. It's real easy to do that. It's real easy to do that. We need people on this town over there every day seeing how many people are actually on the project doing work. We do, okay? To keep it moving. And like I said, I, I said, I, I support a vote on septic sewer. Now, this is the last one and I mentioned it, the chief earlier. I'm a political person, always been a political person. And I welcome anybody with any sort of opinion when it comes to politics. I put signs in front of my yard. And on Friday and Monday, again, stolen fines, defaced signs. This has happened once. This hasn't happened twice. This has happened four times at my yard. People coming on to my property and stealing property, personal property and defacing personal property. This is not what this town is about, okay? And I would hope somebody on this town council or these town leaders would say something about that. That's not what this town is about and this is not what we accept in this town, okay? Okay? We don't accept this, okay? But it's happened not once, not twice, not three times, at least four times and maybe five times to my head. I'm going to put cameras up there, but if I catch somebody in my yard, we're going to have a huge issue, okay? And I'm not one to breach the peace, okay? But it's upsetting to me.
Tim, go to your neighbors because Taylor had an initiative to register the homes that have cameras that would be willing to allow the police department to come and view things just of this nature. If you don't have cameras, maybe somebody around you does. Because I agree, there's no, it's a very tumultuous time we're in right now, as everybody here knows, between national elections and all that kind of stuff. So if I were you, that's what I would do. I would go and check with them and see if there's anything that anybody saw.
There's a bridge shot that comes right down to.
There's what?
There's a bridge shot that comes right down the front of my house.
Yeah.
Yeah. The town cam, the town cam.
Well. Well, we, we can check that one too, but I don't even know, is that, since there's, is that coming in or going out?
We've got cameras coming in, going out. They're, they're, they're short distance, they're reading tags and stuff in a short distance.
Yeah.
But I've talked to them. And I'm, I'm.
Yeah, okay, I've just.
I, I, I've got a camera out there that's not active right now. I'm going to reactivate one of its week, okay? But I'm telling you, I got a problem with it, okay? I got a real problem.
Well, there is a registry now too, for everybody to know, to go and register so that if we have these things, it can help the police department find out who's doing these things, without a doubt, I agree. So, thank you.
And Tim, Tim, just so you know, I dealt with the same thing when I ran for this seat. So I know it stinks and it's unfortunate and I, I definitely understand exactly how you feel. The same thing happened to me. And so it's, no matter what, everyone's entitled to a voice and an opinion, so.
I agree. I totally agree.
You know, so we'll definitely get that figured out and I'm sure chief can help us get a solution.
But they're coming on my property.
I understand. I, I'm telling you, I definitely understand that, for sure.
It's a problem, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, and it happened on Friday and it happened again on Monday, so, okay?
Yeah, thanks, Tim.
Thank you. Sorry to hear that. Yeah, sorry to hear that.
Do we have any other audience comments? Yes, sir, come on up.
I'm Howard Goldfarb, I'm at 7150 Westlake. Two things I have to discuss. First thing, I'd like to send a shout out to the police department, the chief. We were away, my wife and I, for two weeks of summer. We asked and signed up to have the police department stop by and take a look. And we've got cameras front and rear and we were able to see that the police department not only went, drove by, but they actually walked around the back of the house, checked the doors and great comfort feeling and we thank the police department. And there you go. And that was another part of it. My wife wanted to thank them, so she asked if she could bring pizza and whoever she spoke to, we, I said, I don't know, nobody's ever asked if we. Will you bring anything? So we, we got the approval and she brought pizzas in through.
That's very nice.
Great, well, that, you know, try to get some positive stuff into some of these meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As far as the septic to sewer, Jen and her team put together 900-plus people, residences, communities that elect all you guys to get a vote done on it. I know John ran on that. You, you guys, I guess, were appointed not having to run, but there will be other elections. I think it's more than fair to get everybody's opinion, not only the 900 people that signed for it, so I'm really pushing, get this thing to a vote. Find out what everybody wants and what they don't want and what the exact costs are going to be for everybody and how that's going to be distributed and then we can move forward intelligently.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Coniker, my old friend, come on up here. It's nice to see you.
Hi, John, John Coniker. My address is confidential per state statute. I came here with one question, but after listening to the other people, I now have four. Um, and I would ask for a little leeway in my time, because out of 45 years, this is the second time I've ever been here.
I never run a timer. You have all the time you need, sir. Tell us what you're thinking.
Okay. I keep hearing about the bridge and sewers and stuff like that. Does the fiscal year start on October 1st in this town?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I thought so. Um, are we going to pay Dan Clark $136,000 plus benefits after October 1st?
No.
No. Okay. Has Dan Clark helped with the questions that everybody's had with the sewer and, and the bridge and all that for his, for his pay that we've been paying him? How much input has he had to this town council that the residents can benefit that from?
Joe, you can take that one.
The, the charrette was by four independent. Have you watched the, the informational charrette?
No, I have not.
Okay, I would advise everybody to read that. It has costs, it's all, it's very transparent on costs and information answered. We asked for all questions. We got 40 or 50 questions. We end, we try to answer them. It's about an hour and 50 minutes. We brought in experts from outside and they, they did a little informational meeting. We call it a charrette. It's on our website. I would, please watch it, John, and then call me with any questions.
Okay, leads me to my fourth question. If we went outside, as you just now said, and I've heard others say, oh, we asked for this engineering firm and these people have given us. How, why do we have him on a payroll? I know who put him on the payroll is Bob Chalhoo, but why do we still have him on a payroll and you all are sitting here and, and they are writing the check? I don't understand that. What have we gotten for our money since Dan Clark has left?
Yes, sir, you.
He went on one video conference. I know that because I watched that. Other than that, 136.
Can, can I answer that, John?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, it was me who hired him, he, as a consultant engineer.
Okay.
And it's for, up to $45,000 a year. And he's paid at 90, up to $45,000 per year. And it's, I, I believe it's $95 an hour or something like that. And our normal rate is almost $200 an hour. So we're using him as a consultant engineer on the bridge, on septic to sewer, very little because we're not, septic to sewer is frozen, so we're not doing anything on septic to sewer besides that informational meeting.
Okay.
But we're using him on grants, we're using him on anything to do with engineering. So we're saving money, in my opinion, we're saving money by utilizing his skills.
So we're using his skills.
Right.
From what you just said, what about the other people that were going to use their skills and we are paying them? Why do we have to have him?
It's not duplicate, it's not a duplicate services.
Oh, so he's been the only one at, at certain things? He's been the only opinion that's been given to the town council? Is that what you're saying?
He doesn't advise the town council. He did once, he came for the bridge because he had so much knowledge. He, so we did have a virtual meeting with him.
Every month, he's got a, he's, he has to advise somebody, he's not advising the residents.
He's, he's working for me.
Okay.
Just like other engineers work for me.
So he advises you, so my, really my question was, how much have we gotten for his fees?
I think he's worth every penny we pay.
I know. My question is number, how many hours? You said it gets this per hour.
It's, it's up.
I got the 100, wait a minute, I interrupted you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I got the $136,000 figure from like two years ago. Okay, that was the, the figure floating around. That was his previous salary. It was voted on, not by you all, and John Maples, was voted on by this council to continue his salary. Am I wrong?
You're wrong, it, it's, it's forty-five thousand dollars. Last time I checked, it wasn't even close to that, it was like thirty thousand something. Eduardo's in the back, he did the public records request. Uh, somebody asked for a public records request and we looked at it, but he's under the forty-five thousand, so.
Okay.
He's paid on an hourly basis as a part-time employee at ninety-five dollars an hour.
But we're getting ready to cut him loose on October first, is that right?
No.
Why not? What, why are we continuing to pay him when you go outside and pay these other people? I don't understand that.
Well, uh, again, it's not, in my opinion, it's not a duplicate of services, it's actually using his services to run the town. So we need, we need engineers to run the town.
Wait, I'm, I'm not the smartest guy, but I did pass math, okay? I'm not seeing it, I don't see that we pay this outside person this per hour and whatever the figure is, and then we pay another group of engineers, because he's an engineer. I think that we need to look at that on paper. I don't think, I don't think that it's worth it. That plus his benefits and all that?
No benefits.
No benefits.
It's just an.
Well, then, then the paper that was floating around here two years ago is completely wrong then, is what you're saying.
Well, that was two years ago.
I don't know what the paper was, but I'm telling you what's.
So we've gone from a buck thirty-six two years ago, now down to whatever you.
Now it's kinda like a per diem.
It's, it's.
Okay, I'm done, I twisted my head around, thanks for your time.
Thanks, John.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, John.
Glad you're feeling well.
Thank you.
All right, any other audience comments? Yes, sir, come on up.
Hi, my name's, my name is Barry Mylum, I'm at seventy-one twenty-eight Westlake. Um, I've been in construction for over fifty years as a general contractor, commercial and residential. My question is to Joe, uh, in regards to the six, nine months, um, do we have a penalty clause in the agreement?
Can I answer that? Can, can I answer?
What's that?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, it's a, it's three hundred and ten days is the project, uh, not to exceed three hundred and ten days and it's one thousand dollars of liquidation damages per day after that.
Wish I'd taught you earlier, that the higher it is, the quicker you'll get it done. And I understand that.
We're, we're trying to get it done as quickly as possible.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Seventy-two oh five Westlake Drive. I have a question on easements.
Pardon me?
On easements?
Easements.
The easements behind the house?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, who's monitoring those? Because several years ago, when Irma came, our neighbor lady's tree took out the power pole back there. The only way that the power guys a week later could get to that pole and connect to the one over there was through the vacant lot, which is now being built on. So there's gonna be a house there. The people behind us.
You, you're on the other side of that vacant lot right there on Westlake?
It's not vacant anymore.
It's not?
No.
Well, there's another one down there, so.
There's only one vacant lot on Westlake before the boat ramp.
Before, yeah, okay, that's.
The judges, but he's got that all fenced.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Yeah, no, the, the people behind us had moved in. They opened, they emptied out the pool that was filled in and put all the dirt pile in the easement there and left it there for two or three years, then they decided to fill the pool back in, now they've built a clujia hedge there. So I don't know how any power people are gonna be able to get to the power poles. I mean, there's.
Can I answer that?
Joe?
Uh, usually, not always, uh, there's, uh, power lines are in a utility easement. So it provides them access to the, the aerial lines, uh, which are laterals, they'll call laterals in neighborhoods, and also to the poles. Not always, we've seen utilities that don't, don't have an as, uh, uh, an easement, but also they're in the right of way. So they should have access, but if you'd like me to, I'll come to your property and we'll look at your questions.
Okay.
Sure, just come, just give me a holler.
Thank you. Any other audience comments? Anyone?
Tim Daughtry, fourteen-ten Keller. So now you're saying it's three hundred and ten days?
It's three hundred and ten days.
Okay, that's not nine months.
It's not to exceed three hundred and ten days.
Okay, but you said you had a timeline, three hundred and ten days.
No, it's in the contract for three hundred and ten days not to exceed with liquidation damages of a thousand.
That's over ten months, okay?
We're gonna try to get it done as quickly as possible.
Okay, like I said, it slips, it slips, it slips, it slips, okay?
Sometimes contractors surprise us, they get jobs done early.
I'm just telling you.
Sounds like he's one of the guys that gets it done early.
Not lately.
Tim, you understand, you are a contractor, you understand, we're trying hard to get it done within a reasonable timeframe.
And I'm saying, every time I hear somebody else say something, it's additional time.
Well, there's a written contract approved by the attorney sitting right here to my right, so.
We didn't change the time.
Just because you can take liquidation.
I'm just saying, they.
Necessarily meet.
I understand, they have a contract to adhere to and it has stipulations in it.
Okay.
Okay? All right, do we have any email questions over there, ladies?
Uh, yes, we do. So, uh, there are comments online. Um, the first one is from, uh, John Hersakorn. Uh, with the closing of Pine Tree set to begin, we would like to know what measures are being taken to assure those of us that live on Westlake are still able to walk our dogs or just walk without worrying about speeders. Also, those that don't know, they're allowed to cross the double lines when approaching us. And then he says, I'm the neighborhood dog walker, I spend lots of time walking north and south on this street, hence my comment. So that's, that's his comment.
Who wants to tackle that one? Chief, you guys will be on duty, you'll be taking care of business, we're sure of it.
We've been working on this for months. We've got ducks in the world, we did best with.
Pine Tree is gonna see some increased activity down through Keller, it's, it's inevitable.
Yes.
So we'll just have them out doing their thing.
We do get a lot of questions about that double line crossing.
Yes.
And if there's a way to notify people or let them know that for pedestrians, they can.
We, we do have some signs up on both the main thru affairs where, uh, people walk, but there's no sidewalks, so, you know, it can be dangerous. Uh, we have, since I've been here in twenty-four years, we've never had a pedestrian hit. But before that, they did have a pedestrian.
Thank God.
Killed on the causeway, that was before.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Dana.
Is there another one?
Uh, yes, from Jeff Birkin. Uh, I want the sewer issue to be checked for viability by the EPA. Why wasn't their offer to do this accepted? Danny says, we deserve to vote on this issue. LCS isn't an oligarchy, I guess?
Oligarchy.
Um, what happened to the gates at Keller?
Is that a, a question or a comment? That sounds like a lot like a question.
It is what it is.
The gates were taken down due to the traffic study that was, people wanted the traffic study. We got the traffic study, spent how many dollars and were doing what they said. And we will see where we land within that timeframe after, where are we at in that, by the way?
Uh, thank you for bringing that up. Um, we're supposed to bring that back to you next month, it's, it's for, um, it was a six-month survey to see if we, we liked having the gates off. Um, my suggestion is we don't bring it back, because with all the construction that's gonna be on that area, uh, all the congestion and all the traffic, I think we postpone that decision till after the bridge is done.
I concur.
So if, if that's a head shake, I'll bring it back after the, you okay with that, John?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we'll bring it back after, but, um, it's still, the, the gentleman who asked the question, it's still being surveyed to see if we wanna permanently remove them or put the gates back up. And we'll, we'll decide that after the bridge.
Yeah, let's see what the data tells us and we'll go from there.
And then we have another comment from Victoria Prinsey. I'd like for the town to allow a vote also on the Septic to Sewer.
She wants what, I'm sorry?
A vote on the Septic to Sewer.
Oh, what? Oh, okay, sorry, I've just gotten off an airplane and my ears are still filled and I came directly from the airport to this meeting, so. Okay. Any other questions? Any other comments from anybody, from, yes, come on up. Talk into the microphone there, thank you.
Hi, I'm Tony Pickering, I live at fourteen thirty-five North Lake Court. One thing about the gates on my street, there's like six houses. People actually use our little, little street as a speedway cutting through and it's gotten worse since the gates have come down.
Okay.
Couple of us have almost been hit walking our dogs. So the reason I'm here, see if I can't get a speed bump put there so that they stop using it.
Okay.
Cause that's the reason, there's two streets, there's us, a middle street and then Keller. We're the only two with no speed bump. And that's, they use ours mainly for to cut through the pine tree.
Okay.
And to get the lake water.
That was part of the traffic study as well, so there is some information in there and that's what all this compilation that's going on now is gonna tell us, so, yeah.
Cause I've talked to some of my neighbors and they won't hesitate to have a speed bump put.
Right. If you give me a call up, I'll go over that one.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Have a nice.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments before we move on? Okay, so, uh, we'll have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion for consent?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aries? Okay, we have no presentations, no quasi judicial proceedings, no public hearing, no unfinished business. We do have new business. Uh, Joe, you wanna take this, this is a lien reduction request from seventeen fifty-five Forest Hill Boulevard.
We have a, um, a property owner that's requesting a lien reduction, may please start, introduce yourself.
Or you, uh, Robin Cruz, seventeen fifty-five Forest Hill Boulevard.
Talk up into the microphone, thank you, sir.
So, uh, we'd like to say thank you, we are neighbors, so we bought the property about a year ago. It was a broken, or is a broken condo of thirty-three of thirty-five units. And we've assembled the, you know, one more unit and kinda took a pause, you know, we can go ahead and collapse the association, but, uh, you know, we were introduced to Eric at the town, who's a code enforcement officer, uh, the first day we were there. And I always go on the thesis that no one ever sells you anything that's doing well and, you know, making money. So we bought this place, uh, we came in, uh, you know, we've invested money. Uh, we've also removed a lot of problem people there and we continue to maintain, uh, invest. Uh, thanks to Eric introducing us to the city manager, who's a, you know, really nice guy. I think you guys are very lucky to have a city manager, a very good police department. Uh, we deal with a lot of municipalities and everyone here seems to be very hands-on, very productive and that what's, that's what makes a good town. And it's very well-run, I think you guys have great staff and we're proud and very lucky to be a part of this and I enjoy sitting here in the, in the commission meeting and hearing all the good stuff that's being done in the town, investing in infrastructure, uh, you know, good old hometown policing where the cops are doing their job and walking around when people go on vacation. Uh, you know, I thought that was a thing of the fifties, you hear stories about it. Um, but, you know, it doesn't seem that very many police departments are even, you know, doing things like that these days. So kudos to having a very well-run police department, um, in a very well-run town. And that's a testament to the city manager and obviously you guys as elected council, so. You know, glad to be at this meeting, attend the meeting in full, because, you know, I expected just to be here for, you know, your typical code enforcement lien hearing, but it's nice to hear a, you know, uh, to be and attend a full-run city commission meeting where you can hear things actually being done and a lot of proactive steps taking place, because you don't see a lot of proactivity these days. And we try to do that as we manage our property. And also thanks to the conversation, which I was introduced with, with Eric and I'm sorry to be long-winded about this, because we're really here for something small, which is, you know, lien reduction for a trailer parked outside of the property. Um, you know, I just wanted at least compliment you guys, because we are accelerating the timeline to take down that unit, the additional condo unit, make it back into a full-blown apartment building. So we have full site control, um, because ultimately the money that backs the property are developers out of Chicago. So it is nice to have and nice to know that, you know, that plan is in place. And, you know, we do look to expand our footprint there as well within that community. So, you know, just wanted to give you guys some compliments, I know some of these meetings can be a little bit difficult, um, you know, to hear some negativity, but dealing a lot with different municipalities, police departments and, you know, municipal staff, it's been a pleasure to, you know, work with you guys. So, thank you, first and foremost.
Let's get a little bit, a little bit of background. Uh, what do we, we have a request, what is the total amount of the lien?
Total amount that I see is two thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty cents.
How much?
Two thousand six hundred and something change.
Twenty-six hundred dollars?
Two thousand five sixty.
Yeah, twenty-five hundred, sorry, two thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and twenty cents.
So, give, uh, Rich?
Rick, I mean Eric.
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 What's, huh?
Eric, I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
His, his name's Eric.
Eric, I'm sorry, we, we were hoping to have that reduced parking ticket, because it was a trailer parked outside. Rich wagon, I'm sorry, told you, I'm tired, it's been a long hectic day.
I can't hear after an airplane, I don't know.
I can't.
It is hard to hear you, but.
Yeah.
Still not.
Tell us, talk to us, we, you know, as last meeting we had, we kinda wanna know some timelines and what was going on and how did we land? Twenty-six hundred dollars doesn't sound like a lot of money to me.
Yeah, so this property, uh, for this particular violation, um, the notice of violation was issued on one twenty-three twenty-two. The notice of hearing was issued on three fourteen twenty-two. Uh, there were two code enforcement board hearings on this, one on three twenty-seven twenty-two, another one on four, sorry, four twenty-four twenty-two, which, uh, unfortunately no one from the property was present. However, during the next meeting on five twenty-two twenty-two, a representative of this property did show up. Uh, it was for a different case, it was actually for trash and debris on the property, but it was brought to the, uh, representative's attention that there was a ongoing trailer issue. So the following day on five twenty-three twenty-two, the trailer violation came into full compliance. Uh, the only other back information I wanna give you is that when Mr. Cruz did purchase this property, I had cited the previous owner for things, uh, Mr. Cruz did work with me and the town um, and what violations have been there have now been, been corrected. So I do want, wanna compliment Mr. Cruz for completely redoing the parking lot and a, a assisting with this, uh, trash dumpster issue, that was an ongoing issue for many years prior to him purchasing it.
Sure, and just to kinda give you some background about the trash issue with waste management, we were trying to right-size our dumpster based on their recommendations. One of the recommendations that they had was that we placed one four-yard there to be picked up every single day of the week and we adhered to that, okay? The problem was waste management, this was their call center recommending it to us. They ended up telling us, when we were having constant overflow issues and trying to find out, you know, hey, our dumpster is supposed to be picked up every week, we find out from one of the reps that they don't service the town, um, for commercial sites unless they have a contract in place, meaning like, uh, like Walmart or some big-name client. And some days they don't pick up, so we were like, well, why did we sign and pay for seven days? You know, when we're only getting service for five. So then we went ahead, we put in a second dumpster in there, um, you know, to be serviced Mondays, Wednesdays, and then they guaranteed us a Saturday pickup, that Saturday pickup ended up being intermittent. So that ended up creating a greater problem. So long and the short, after we got that rectified and it was all in emails, two ways management. Um, you know, we finally had that issue resolved, it took about three months for it to get resolved. We ended up getting a humongous credit back from waste management, because by this with videos for actual trash pickup service. So now that we have that all resolved and, you know, now we know how waste management works in this town.
So what's your reduction request?
I mean, you know, parking tickets are forty bucks, this was.
I'm, pardon me, I'm sorry.
Parking tickets are usually forty dollars, this is a twenty-five hundred dollar fine.
I'm sorry, but I can barely hear.
I can barely hear him.
Sorry, I said parking tickets are usually forty bucks.
Oh, well, yeah, we can't do that.
Obviously, when it was resolved, you know, we resolved it as soon as.
Okay, thank you, we do appreciate that, I'm sure the neighbors that live over there appreciate it also.
I know, of course.
Okay, so, as you all know, you know my opinions on these things up here, so I can't make a motion, but I'll give you my two cents. Twenty-six hundred dollars is not a lot of money and I see people out there shaking their heads, no. I know it's tough on you guys, I, we know those areas over there, is that correct? You say he's been working, yes?
Yes.
Cause we've been calling, Joe and I have gone by there and looked at that, um, so.
There's definitely a difference.
Pardon me?
There's definitely a difference with the new ownership.
Okay.
And calls, call service with the police department, I hope.
I can also attest to that, you know, dealing with it for seventeen years, that he has most improved it.
Say it again, Dana?
I can attest, after being here for seventeen years and dealing with that property, he is the individual who has most taken care of it.
And we intend to keep it that way, I mean, our goal is obviously to reinvent the stone. We, we put in the right people, you know.
Eric, talk real close to that thing, thank you. Eric, talk real close to that thing. Thank you.
Yeah, what I'll say is, from the time that I started in Lake Clark Shores until now, I can tell you that the trash situation has gone from being quite a mess to now where they're doing two or three-day, a, a week pickups. The moment the trash i- is being dropped off, it's being picked up the very next day. Whereas before, you were having trash out there of two, three, four days, and the piles were getting very big. So some of the neighbors in that surrounding area that had issues, it's not perfect, but they're, they're, they're definitely seeing the difference. So Mr. Cruz is definitely putting in, in the effort to, to, to better the property.
And we're here to be good neighbors, you know, we're here to help. You know, obviously, we want to, we're doing this in good faith and, you know, hope that, you know, we can see the cooperation from you guys. And you guys are very proactive and, you know, have done a good job, you know. So we're here to help. We're here to be good neighbors, and we respect our communities. You know, we always improve everything. We're not slumwards where we take the money. We always like to put the money back in. So even with taxes going up, you know, we're glad we purchased it. We gradually raise assessed value here so that we can keep the military down for you guys. And, you know, we'll continue to do so, you know, so.
So Mr. Cruz, I want to say thank you for investing in the town and, and, and making that community, that little section there, taking pride in that and making it better for the neighbors. And also, you know, the trash thing, a separate issue from what we're looking at today with the trailers. And just to give you a little history on trailers, we had a quite a bit of a to-do with trailers. And it was a, a very thorough discussion. And I noticed the, the code enforcement team, you know, took the initiative and kind of went through that process and took all the necessary steps to make that happen. While I absolutely look forward to working with you and your team in the future. You know, this twenty-six hundred bucks, twenty-five hundred dollars for this trailer deal. It's part of doing business. Unfortunately, we have spent quite a bit of time on these trailers before you, before you bought and moved here and kind of got a scope up, just to give you a little backdrop of my short time on this council. And we spent most of it talking about trailers. So I would be remiss to reduce this fine based on the amount of time that was committed to just this particular topic on the trailer. So, so that's, that's my, I'm only one of four people up here, but that's my perspective on that.
Do you want to make that in the form of a motion to vote on or have discussion?
Mr. Cruz, it, it, from looking at this timeline here, it seems like you have two and a half months to come into compliance from the time that you were first notified of this issue.
Sure. So the mail doesn't come directly to our office. So it went to a mailbox that's not necessarily monitored by the equity partner for this. So unfortunately, it did not come to us directly. So we weren't able to unfortunately react on it. The one that we did get directly and, you know, it could have been a matter of timing and, you know, letters do look the same. You know, we reacted to the dumpster and we were communicating with town staff about the dumpster continuously, you know, copying them on emails and bringing them up. The girl who attended the hearing did bring up the trailer right after she was made aware of it at the hearing. So, you know, there's not necessarily a forum online where the city has where you can review code enforcement cases online. So typically, my office always checks every property where we can, you know, every month to see if there's any pending violations. Unfortunately, the city doesn't have that. And usually it's, I, I believe when the violation is mailed, it's mailed almost like on a door hanger per se, so.
And mailed as well.
A little bit, yeah, but it, it, it's a little bit difficult to interpret rather than maybe a full letter. So maybe it wasn't included in the pages that he scanned to us. So we weren't aware of the violation in that respect. But when we were made aware of it, we reacted the very next day to my case in point. So as soon as the girl told us, we jumped on it. We got it out of there. It's not a problem. So something like that, we did our part to do it. And if we were aware of it, you know, either by having a better website where, you know, dealing with two different municipalities where we can see the violations outlined. I mean, we would have caught it and it would have been a not issue. Everything else we've done and taken care of, and it's been a not issue. Because when we took over the property, it did come with violations of noise ordinances with the tenants. And immediately we seven-dated them and we evicted them. We threw them out. Okay, so we are on it. The driveway too. We were going to spend the money on the driveway. It was already cited right at the time when we took over. We took care of it. We pulled the permits. We paid for it. We did what we had to do. So we are no BS, no joking around, and that's how we deal with our business. So we see a problem, we take care of the problem. We don't sit around like a dog, you know, and part of that is being a good neighbor. And we're cooperating, and I just respectfully ask your cooperation. And I know that twenty-six hundred isn't a lot of money, but at the same time too, I'm here to work with you guys and hopefully you can work with me on that. And I appreciate your thought and consideration on that.
I appreciate that you are improving that neighborhood, which could definitely use some improvement. As a landlord, I have a clause in all my leases that says code violations are the tenant's responsibility if they've caused the code violation. And I also, as a landlord, every one or two weeks drive past each property, just to visually make sure that everything's copacetic. I think that if anybody had, in your team had driven past, they would have seen that that doesn't really look so attractive.
Well, we, we know that, but like I said, the problem was waste management not serving the dumpsters.
Well, no, we're not talking about the dumpster.
But for the trailer, you know.
The trailers, that you're being cited for trailers, not for dumpsters.
I understand that. So just to, we weren't aware of the municipal code of having a trailer on the property. Because certain municipalities such as unincorporated parts of Holly, well Hollywood, Hallandale, you know, other municipalities do allow people who are working class. And this is a working-class community to go ahead and park a trailer in the tenant's assigned space. So the tenant does have a work trailer. They are parking it there. Obviously, to, just like everyone here is complaining about burdens that they have, you know, obviously we have blue-collar tenants. There are people who service community, who are building bridges, things like that, and they're paycheck to paycheck because we see it every single day. You know, people are struggling to pay their bills. People are going ahead and applying online. They don't qualify for an apartment. They should qualify for an apartment. So yes, we do see the trailer. Okay, it is in the assigned tenant's parking spot. But if it's, if it's there and it's that person's livelihood and it saves them money, you know, so that way they can go ahead and have life, do nice things. We don't mind letting them have them park a trailer there. Now, some municipalities such as Coral Springs don't even allow people to have work vans parked in a residential place. Now, for me, you know, I think, you know, to each its own, but at the same time too, a working person shouldn't be penalized for parking their car outside. It's like, okay, well, why do you allow work vans to park outside? But yet you'll not park outside, but you'll allow a police officer to park his car outside, you know. So I mean, in that sense, it doesn't make any sense in that respect. So, you know, we're, we're trying to assist people, you know, in that respect. But now that we're fully aware of that, you know, we go ahead and nobody's allowed to park their trailer there.
I don't want to, I don't want to cut you off and interrupt you, but I, we're not here to decide on the actual pieces of code.
Right.
The code board does that for us, and we believe in their hard work. I don't like setting a precedent case by case in this manner. So I think up here, that's where I stand on these issues, similar to Mayor Freebold, how we know where he stands. But that's a very specific piece of code that you just brought up, that we're not going to have a big discussion about whether or not that's, that's fair or if a police officer's car should be in there.
A little long-winded, but, you know, obviously, you know, our goal is, we are aware, my point is, we're aware of the code. People aren't allowed to do that. And case in point two, like you say, we drive the properties. We make sure that all the vehicles are tagged. They're not, they get towed, very simple. So our staff does that on a, you know, when they're there. And obviously, the same now for trailers as well, now that we're aware of the municipal code.
You want to make a motion, Vice Mayor?
Yep, I will make the motion. And Mr. Cruz, again, I am really excited to work with you, and I appreciate all the hard work you've done on that property, making this place better, making their lives a little simpler and a little easier. I'm in compliance and looking forward to work with you again. But again, the work that's been put on this trailer, piece of code is, has been substantial. And, and with that being said, I will make a motion to keep the lien as it is, two thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty cents. And I believe in the full amount of the lien without reduction.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second.
All those in favor? I. Any opposed? Aries, four to zero. Thank you.
We'll keep working with you.
Okay, we're not going to have status reports, correct? We have, this is the second meeting, so there are no status reports tonight.
Can you just go over a couple of things?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yep.
First thing is, obviously, there's, there's a possible hurricane coming through the West Coast. So if, if anyone sees any clogged drains or anything like that, call staff. We'll monitor it. We're working on it. Staff's working on it. But God bless everybody that's in the path of that storm. It doesn't look like a good one.
Do you want to take a, right at second and let them exit? Because I just want to be able to follow everything.
Thank you. You want me to repeat that?
Actually, yes.
Okay. All right, staff is following, obviously, the soon-to-be Hurricane Helane. It's, it's proposed to blow up in size, so about four hundred miles wide. So we're working on it. Obviously, we might experience a little bit of winds, maybe forty mile an hour winds. So it's not too drastic, but flooding is an issue too. So if you see any clogged drains or anything, please notify us, but be safe. And may God bless everybody that's in the path because it doesn't look like, it looks like a major storm that, that's possible. The bridge is going to be closed next Wednesday, as we've been discussed. We will monitor that situation also. The boat ramp was supposed to be closed this week. Obviously, with all the rain expected, maybe that's going to be delayed, but that's a two-to-three-week project. I put in front of you a letter from our residents, Mr. and Mrs. Ebed, Abey?
Evan.
Eben?
Tim.
Tim. And we, we've been working on this issue now, the chief and I and the police department with these jet skis and the amount of noise that these, they're not normal jet skis. They're jet skis with basically high performance without a muffler. So we've been working with them, trying to be, work it out as a good neighbor first. That's not working. So I think we have to go into the next phase and look at some ordinances or whatever we can do to cite them. So I'm just letting you know, giving you an update. We're, we're going to take the next phase in this because they just are not being a good partner. And it's, to me, it's a quality of life issue because it's very loud and it's, it's unacceptable. So just letting you know, we're going to take the next phase on that.
And, and Joe, for the record, that those individuals were informed of all of that action that you're taking.
We're, we, we have, I've talked to Canadian people from, I mean, I've talked to people from Canada that do this as competitions. We have a resident that actually does it, we believe, too. There's people from New Jersey. We, we've talked to a lot of groups that are doing it. It's not just one group. So we'll, we'll keep trying to talk to them, but we, we might go into the next phase. Other municipalities have passed things like with motorcycle noise and where they can get tickets and stuff like.
I mean, the individuals who brought this letter to us.
Yeah, oh, yeah. We're totally communicating with them. They were, they were here at the meeting. I told them they can go home because I'm going to bring it up.
Good.
So.
Thank you.
So they're, they're very nice people. So, and we're taking it very seriously because they're just, it's, it got a little better and now it's got worse again. So, and I hear, seeing nodding of the heads, you guys agree with me.
And Joe, are you going to come back to us at the next meeting in October with kind of the recommended, recommendation for how we're going to at least start to work to solve this issue?
We, we have some tools in the tool chest. We just haven't brought in Charlie yet. So we might have to, like I said, there, there is some ordinances other cities have put in for motorcycles that I know of, and it has worked. So we can look at that, but we, we can take the noise meter and actually measure from the, the property owner. But the problem is they're not property owners except for one, so it's hard to cite them. So I'm not saying we're going to have a solution. I, I don't think we're going to come back next.
Well, they, they are registered watercrafts, so they're, they are registered, correct? Okay.
But, but remember, code violations are by property owners, so if they're not.
No, I understand. So then it doesn't necessarily have to be a code enforcement issue if it's a marine unit out there handing out a ticket for, let's just say, a safety check or whatever, or something of that nature, correct? I understand it's not easy. We've had this discussion. Tim and his wife have come to my house. We've had him in, we've sat down, we've talked. I agree, it's frustrating. But it's one of those things.
We did reach out to the state, and the state really said there's not much you can do about it.
Yeah, I know.
Literally. So we did reach.
We need more guidelines, tell them.
Well, the lake belongs to the town, so Joe and I will get together and then we'll get with the attorney and maybe come up with something that may be enforceable.
But to answer your question, John, might it take longer than two weeks to figure this out?
Okay, next couple of months? What are you thinking?
Yeah, we're going to, we're, we're working on it.
Okay.
We're, we're working on it, but, and we'll continue to communicate with them.
Yeah, okay. Well, I didn't want to push you in a corner. I just know that when we're dealing with some of these things, you know, if we can give some folks some kind of timeline, that way it's just so they know that it hasn't been forgotten or.
The timeline of communicating is, is over, and so we're researching how to.
Solve it.
Solve it.
Yeah.
Like I said, that the other community with the motorcycles did solve it, in my opinion. All right, insurance. Question came up. There's insurance on the agenda. It says it's not advantageous to go out to bid, and you guys see that a lot. So let me explain that. We have a purchasing policy, and it's, it's, it's basically says there's exceptions that we, we can do to not follow that purchasing policy. But we can't as staff do those. We have to bring them to you. And what we always use, it's not advantageous. So it's, it's basically a, a, a form we can use that, but that doesn't mean we're not getting bids or informal bids. What it usually means is we're not getting sealed thirty-page bids, but we're still getting quotes. As you can see, I'm very happy with the insurance. Last year, insurance went up over forty percent, about forty-five percent. And this year, with me working with and staff working with our current carrier, it went up three point seven percent. So I'm very happy and very pleased with what we're doing, and our health insurance and our other insurance didn't go up at all. So, but just letting everybody know, when we use that language, it's just a catch-all. It's not anything over twenty-five hundred dollars. We're getting other quotes. So just so you know that, we, we're very, we take our fiduciary's responsibility very, very.
Seriously.
Seriously, thank you. Lost that word. So, but we can't do that without your assistance, but on insurance, you're always going to see that. Because on insurance, there's an agent of record, and you, it's not, the sealed bid process for small cities does not work. Large cities actually self-insure. Small cities are fully insured on, usually, that's on a, so do you have any questions on that?
No, thank you for that clarity.
Nope, no problem. I'm going to work and look into the double line crossing, Taylor, to see if we can educate on the buzz or something like that. So I wrote that down. And then the last thing is, I heard about that Lake Clark Shores on I ninety-five. I do have experience on that about saying you're only point two miles away. I, I have not had success with that, but you, you either. So, but if, I don't mind trying. So if you just say unanimously, would you try to talk to the state? And believe it or not, it's a federal road, I ninety-five. So talk to the state and the feds to see if we can get, I think it says Palm Springs right now.
Yeah, that, right. That was only put up a few months ago.
Oh, really?
The Palm Springs sign.
I thought that was up there while the Palm Springs. Yeah, yes. And I, I've had, like I said, I've had experience with not getting it done, so, but. But it has a lot to do with population.
First, you don't concede. Try, try.
But i- if, if you just shake your head and say unanimously, I've got a council's approval, okay, thank you. I think that's it. So thank you all for coming.
All right, we'll move on to the council comments. Kristy, what do you got for?
Oh, I want to, I, first, I'd like to thank Commissioner Barnett for a, an amazing field trip to the medical examiner last week. A little morbid, but interesting. We mentioned, we voted on two thousand dollars at our last meeting or the prior meeting for the staff Christmas party.
Yes.
I, then I, afterwards, I found out that that doesn't even include a, a holiday cocktail. I think we should, I think the staff work hard.
I like you.
And the staff works hard and deserves, you know, a pina colada at Christmas time. I wouldn't be opposed to approving a little more money so the staff could have some, some.
Just for the record, we have never approved for the town to pay for alcohol.
Okay.
Yes. But I'll buy you a pina colada.
I want to buy all them a pina colada.
Is it under a hundred dollars? Chief, it is, so we're good to go.
All right, X-nay on that one.
But thank you for that.
Yeah, and I want to thank Joe for spending an hour and forty minutes on the phone with me last week, going over the budget in, in line by line. And now I'm going to take Joe to task, actually. I've, I've had this wonderful timeline that he gave me.
It's old, but.
I can see that.
It's the latest one I have.
Yeah, I can see that. Yeah, I can see that. I, I, I have a feeling I will be walking my dog down there every day, wondering what the heck is going on. Okay, I think these guys are gonna spend a month state, quote-unquote, staging materials. And I measured the road, it's a hu, we've got a hundred and eight, hundred and ninety feet by, I go, I think it was like twenty-five feet wide. They do not, in my opinion, do not need, and, and we've got two parks on both sides. They could, we could save ourselves at least a month if they're staged on one lane, or if they, you know, staged some of their materials in, in, in the grass of one of the parks, I just know the way, I'm looking at this, I just know the way these things operate, there, there's like, I think we could cut three or four weeks of road closure out right now.
Man, man, please. Yeah, I, I asked your excellent question to the contractor, and he assures me there's gonna be construction demo with, within, within a short period of time, so. No, it's not gonna be staging, I got a meeting with them on Thursday again.
Did he quantify that short period of time?
With, the first, the first two months is demo, so he's gonna demo the bridge in the first two months. I got a meeting with them on Thursday. So I did tell them that, don't close the bridge unless you ha, don't close the roadway unless you have to, and they go, no, they're on schedule to do work.
So
So that, soon as we give them the notice to proceed, which I haven't given them a notice to proceed yet, hopefully, they're gonna do that this week, they have three hundred and ten days.
And
And that's basically the contract.
Two weeks from now, there'll be no bridge across that water.
And, and to be honest with you, I know you're not gonna like this out there, and you can't do anything about it, yeah, you can go out and scream, and I can go turn blue, but it, it, they have that clause, it's a contract, they have to abide by the contract, if they build it all in the last month, they build it all in the last month, but they, they have three hundred and ten days to do it with, until there's three liquidating damages, we have a great, in my opinion, Baxter and whatever, inspection services, that's required, that came up today. You can't build a bridge in Santa Clara without having an independent inspector on site at all times. So that's required, we have an excellent consultant doing it, I told them, we don't want any downtime, I told them, we wanna get this done, I told the contractor that in the last meeting, so I'm doing what I can, but you can't do much more than that.
And a hundred and ninety is a good price.
It's a great price.
It's very good.
Yeah, we, we had quotes over three hundred thousand.
I mean, these guys are giving themselves holidays all over the place, and, and I know they have three hundred and ten days, but I can see that I and many people in this room will be enormously frustrated if we don't see movement happening.
So will I, but I, I did tell them that, and they said they assured me they're gonna work.
White on rice.
I go that way every day, so I'll be frustrated as well.
Just remember to call me, don't interact with them.
Don't do that.
You don't wanna get in trouble, just call me.
So I'm gonna jump in with a
Come on.
Follow-up to that. How, we're gonna receive ongoing reports, but not just, like, I don't wanna show up at a meeting and get the report two days before, you're gonna keep us in the loop of if there's major setbacks, things that we can be aware of, so that when we are talking to residents, we are informed, you're very good at that, Joe, already, but I just wanna say it out loud.
A hundred percent, we're gonna keep you informed every step of the way, the only reason I haven't given you that timeline yet
Yeah, cuz I haven't seen that.
Cuz it's a draft, so I don't give out drafts.
When is that finalized?
Hopefully this week, like I said, it's, we're having a meeting Thursday. Hopefully, this, you don't finalize it till you have a notice to proceed, they do not have a notice to proceed yet.
Once you get that notice to proceed, would you update this?
Yeah, they will update it, and I will send it to you. My plan was to put it on the website.
I would love that, I would love that.
Okay, and then
I'm taping it up next to my desk. With little check marks every day.
You ever heard of Sixth Avenue Bridge?
I think the name was Tony Pickering that came up and spoke in public comment about the speed bump.
Yes.
On the side road that was like a speed-through from Keller, what is the road?
Yeah.
I know you have a list of items that you're gonna look into, can that be added as well?
We have
I know it's in the traffic study, but that's not coming back, so.
What I was gonna explain to that resident is we, we have a procedure, and how to get a speed bump or any traffic calming device in what we approved. So now there's a procedure.
So you're gonna follow up with them?
Yes, I gave her my card, and she's gonna call me, I hope.
Okay.
She will.
And then last, but not least, I recognize, as an appointed, not elected official, that my feelings specifically are not the most important, but the feelings and wants of the residents that I represent up here are. Can we find out in the sunshine what the process would be to allow the residents to vote on septic to sewer? What does that look like?
That's a legal question.
Yeah.
The process is that you would agree to place it on a ballot, and we would have it then on election ballot, I do not recommend you do it as a special election, because that will be expensive.
Expensive.
What about the petition, similar to that was done?
How do you
The petition
You have
The petition
How do you have a ballot question for only seven hundred and two residents, that's another legal issue. So there's seven hundred and two homes that are affected by it. I'm okay with letting the seven hundred and two homes vote, but it's gotta be done legally, as you know, Charlie, and that's the difficult hurdle to get over.
You have several options, you can do a straw ballot, it, I do not recommend you do a binding ballot, because that is your job, your job, but if you wanna see what the vote is, you can do a straw ballot.
I do that on a regular basis.
And this was a straw ballot, if I, if I stand corrected, this two thousand and five petition was a bit of a straw ballot, is that correct?
I, I don't recall, I'd have to go back and read it again, but
The petition, the nine hundred people sign was legally insufficient.
It was, it did not meet any of the requirements of our code.
This is
This is what I'm referring to, the document that
But that, listen, in two thousand and five, that went to a referendum vote throughout the entire town, which
I don't
Now that we know this, Charlie
I wouldn't call it a referendum vote, cuz referendum means it was on a ballot.
It was.
It was on a ballot.
Yes, it was on a ballot.
No, no, it was a petition, so Mary
It was not on
Are you sure about that?
Not a ballot, it was just a petition. And we counted up everything, had a committee count up all the ballots, and that was the end of it with the majority.
And all, all the homes voted?
That I don't remember, but I think so.
It was overwhelmingly voted down.
Yes.
We know that.
That's the reason why it didn't go anywhere.
Yeah, no, I know the results.
Okay, so it was the, it was all, pretty much all the homes in the community.
Is there one more? Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
He handed me his, thank you.
It's a much simpler process if you do it as a straw ballot.
You're right. And so this was not a straw ballot?
I don't recall how it was done.
Should I have one, please, for the record?
All right, Taylor, you got anything else?
Thank you.
No, do you wanna follow?
Yeah, I do, actually, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Taylor, for bringing that up. We had a lot of residents today, Tim, Jen, Pete, Howard. I mean, just, you know, seven or eight, maybe ten people came up, and eight of them asked for a vote, and online questions as well on the septic to sewer. Again, I live on the north side, I have sewer, and but this town deserves a voice in this process, in which someone said I ran on that issue, and I believe it was Howard, and I did. And I will like to make a motion to have a straw ballot prepared by the town to give the residents of the seven hundred and two homes a vote, whether or not you know, we can move forward, similar to the information that's here, I like the fact that they have pricing, they have some information here that's helpful to the residents, they're looking at this to decide whether or not they're in favor of this or not. Um, I, so I'd like to make a motion for a straw ballot per a little direction from the town manager.
How do we determine language on that, or let's, do we have a second?
Can I, can I, can I make a comment?
Well, let's get a second, and then you can make discussion.
So my only thoughts on, on that, and I know this is me discussing, is that I know that I brought this up at the very end of the meeting, looking for process, do we wanna have more of a conversation around this with all of the background information?
There's a lot of moving parts to this, this is a huge decision.
Right, at, at, at the next meeting, which would still give us the opportunity to do what we need to do with this.
So if there's not a second, it just dies for the moment, he can bring it back at another time.
This is a comment, I'm kinda curious, we wanna focus on the seven hundred and two.
Hold on. Roger, come up, please. Give us name, rank, and serial number, please.
Roger Hoofnagle, seventy-five, thirty-six, Edgewater Circle. Seven hundred and two would be directly impacted with it, but the rest of the residents are going to be disrupted severely with it. So I'm not so sure I completely agree with just allowing seven hundred
Well, we would want more information on that, too, because I would probably tend to disagree, but I may be wrong.
Yeah, I think you are.
Well, there's only handful over here underwater, the rest of them are on the south side, the north side, like where John lives has it, the Estates has it, Wellesley has it.
We're talking about disruption in the future.
No, I understand.
In the past.
I understand, that's, it's just like putting a bridge in, you can't bury your head in the sand and say, all right, we'll wait until they say, it's ten years later, and now we're at ten million dollars for a bridge, we got done for that.
Position that there's more than the seven hundred and two people impacted.
The financial impact is gonna impact the seven hundred and two homes, for the most part, that financial impact is gonna but the, the financial impact impacts seven hundred and two homes. So do we have a second on the motion? No, we don't, if nobody's seconded, it's dead, he can bring it back at another meeting when we have more information.
Can we have it at the next meeting on
You can have anything you want, you can call Joe, listen, throughout the month, you can get with Joe and say, hey, Joe, this is what I'd like to see on the agenda. You, as council members
That's why I'm asking
Anything on this agenda that you want, we want this, this, and that, the numbers are gonna be kinda hard to nail down, because there's gonna be additional inflated engineering costs and permitting costs and all of the stuff that goes along with doing construction jobs.
I also would like to look into before ever voting on a motion like that, like what a straw poll actually is and consists of, and how that all plays out, really
Motion died for lack of a second, and he can bring it back next time, and
Totally understand that, thank you, I just
Beautiful.
Would, I am bringing it up now that I would like to see it on a future agenda at the next meeting, so that I don't have to call Joe separately.
So you'll wanna direct Joe to direct Charlie, because that's gonna be a legal issue, to do that kinda stuff.
Well, we just won't promise, cuz we only have a week, we have a meeting in two weeks, so I don't know.
Might be November.
I, I don't know if we can get it done.
Our next meeting is the second Tuesday in October.
I just think it's really important for us to be able to discuss these things in the sunshine, but
I agree, Taylor, it's very important, it's a big, huge decision. It's monumental, actually.
And, and I wanna be
Charlie concurs, we, we need more time than just a week, just so you know. We need to put up, we wanna give you all the options, we can't just, you know, give you half, half the options.
We can certainly put it together and, and give you a procedure.
Yeah.
That would
With, with, with options.
Yeah. You still have the floor.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, thank you, and, and Joe, for that, to Taylor's point, what, what kinda timeline are we looking for you guys to be able, whatever time you need to be able to do that, what are you thinking?
Well, I, I think we can give you the options in November. It, it's, it's just, there's multiple ways to do it, you, you actually can put it on, on a referendum for a vote, or you can do what I think happened here, was you just mail it out to the residents. So I don't know how you actually put a ballot together just for the seven hundred homeowners, I don't know if that's possible.
It, it is possible.
It is possible, okay, so I've never done that, so, so we need to talk. I don't know.
And, and I think, just to be very clear, I think that what I'm trying to accomplish here is not to vote down septic to sewer, or vote against it, or vote forward, I'm actually really looking to give the residents of this town the voice to make, help us decide to make that decision one way or the other. Many people in this town wanna see sewers, and many people wanna see septic, so we just wanna make sure we have whatever direction we're going in, it's very clear, and then that way we can move all in, one way or the other, on the direction that the town and the residents want us to go. Lastly, did we ever, Joe, I know we talked about this at the last meeting, a slogan for the town? And did we get something going as relates to the direction of that, and, and, and how are we looking for that, and do we get a process for residents to be able to add their thoughts to some kinda slogan, like just do it, or quiet gym, or whatever they, whatever words they wanted, did we put something out on that, cuz I know we spoke about that at the last meeting?
Yes, staff brainstormed that. And the, it, it's, it's hard to just put a slogan without looking at a vision and a mission statement and your goals, so we, we might not have to look at it with a consultant, because
We have to spend money on that?
We, you, you met Elliot, who did our who did our informational meeting, who, he was the MC. He, he can guide us into that direction, because we don't have a vision, we don't have a mission statement, you know, a slogan, we can, we can just throw it out there, cuz I asked him that question, he, but he didn't recommend it.
Well, let me ask this, can we put it to the residents, and at least that gives us a, a tank of thoughts, if you will, that we can then maybe bring to this consultant, that's from the voice of the resident who's lived in this town for fifty, sixty, seventy years?
You have to get residents' input, there's no question about that, but it's just
Before going to the consultant, so we can bring some of these ideas to the table and say, hey, here's what the residents are saying, what are your thoughts?
After talking to him, I agreed with him, I, I think if we're gonna do it, you gotta do it right, so I, I don't like to do things that are not right.
It becomes like binding.
Exactly, yeah, so
We don't have to rush it.
Yeah.
And there's no rush.
Sixty-something years without.
Yeah.
And we want it to be perfect.
So I, I would say, bring him in, let him, you know, pick his brain, he's done this many times. I've been involved in it once, and it was like thirty years ago, so I'm, I'm not too familiar with it, but
What, what was Juno's tagline?
We didn't have it.
They didn't have one?
It was just, it's all about the turtles.
All about the turtles, well, that's one right there, I got that.
We have a vision, we had a vision, we had a mission statement. But, you know, there's, you wanna tag, you know, it, let's say we wanna use the, the E-grid, you know, we're a bird community, we, we wanna put that different parts of the town with an E-grid, so you know you're in Lake Clark Shores, there's many parts of this puzzle, if you start opening it up. So I, I would recommend we at least talk to a professional first.
I, I would love to have a contest like Taylor recommended, and for the residents, at, at some point in the process, but I, to me, in my think, my thinking, residents should come before that, before spending money on a consultant.
I'll do whatever you'd like, but again, he convinced me that I, I, you have to have residents' input, there's no question about it, it's just part of the process.
Yeah, you know, but I, I would rather, just thinking about, I, I don't, I'd rather not, this guy who doesn't live in the town, give us three options to vote on, and those are the three, one of the three we go with.
No, 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 he's gonna give us a process, so, so the process will include Right, will include citizens' engagement and all that.
Okay, okay, just a process to be able to get to the final answer.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, no, you have
It's actually something to think about, because if it comes out, and we all decided, well, we really love like Bodie McBodie face, or whatever happened to that ship that got named up in Alaska, cuz everyone put their stuff into a hat. There's a process, we didn't just select something that we liked.
Right.
You know, so
I, I don't wanna say things bad about other cities, but I'll show you other examples.
That one in particular made headlines, so
So I will privately show you some that I don't think are great, so, so that's why I'm saying, let, let's, if we're gonna do it, I think we should do it right. And just see what the price is, I mean, we don't, I don't even know what the price is.
Yeah.
Let's get him in here and, and let him talk about it.
Okay. Last thing, Mayor, I'd like to thank all the residents for coming, it's been the evening with us, it's great to see all, a lot of familiar faces, having people come up and voice their opinion. We're listening, we're taking notes, and really appreciate you taking the time to, to come and, and share, and expect us to do our job up here, and, and so we really appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good, good. All right, motion to adjourn, I have nothing for the good of the order at this time.
So moved?
Second?
Second.
On favor? Here we go. Thank you, everybody.
You need to stick a jaw.